Awesome, awesome.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good.
Good?
I'm good.
We definitely need to get together soon.
Sounds good to me.
You say it, you're saying it.
I know, we do.
People's show.
We do. We're both busy.
You can do it, come on.
I know, but I didn't.
You just, you wanted to talk about. Yeah, I go to Second Hill Lane School and you said, what do you think? They said, yeah. So I think, you support them, right? Tell it, go ahead, Nick.
Do we have? Oh.
You're running around just on your tusk. Talk after.
I got a funny story for you. Got a letter in the mail today.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah.
I know exactly the letter, I had no idea.
I'm not too, it's still my name.
But I turned it over to you, I know.
It was forty-five years ago. Post office. We all have been blessed.
That speaks a character.
But why me? Why'd I get it? We all have it. I have one. Oh, there is? Oh, it's full.
Good evening, my name is Carl Glad, Chair of the Town Council. I'm calling the public forum to order at 6:00 PM. The town, the council clerk is getting the list of names of speakers. If you have not signed up on that list, you have one last opportunity to do so. Once the list is up here, there are no more names to be added to that list. For those of you who have not done this before, when you come up, please give your name and address. Okay? We need that because only taxpayers and residents are allowed to speak at this meeting. So if you're a representative from an organization or association and don't fit into those categories, our rules don't allow you to speak. So again, please give your name and address. There are a lot of us tonight.
Thank you.
I'm still going to give you each three minutes to speak. I'm sure that's what you've prepared for. But please be really respectful of that. The council clerk will let you know when there's one minute left to speak. Once that timer goes off, which you will hear, please step away from the microphone and let the next, I will call the next person in order, please let them speak. It's respectful to them and everyone here who wants to speak to do so. We do, our rules require us to gavel in for our town council meeting at seven o'clock. So I will stop this, if we don't, if we haven't gotten through everyone, I will stop slightly before seven. Right, I won't, we have to gavel in at exactly seven. So I'll stop before seven. We'll recess this, the public forum, and then after we are done with our business, we will recess the town council meeting and go back to the public forum. And anyone who is still on the list can speak at that point in time, okay? So you'll have to wait to the end at that point in time. Otherwise, we can get started. Yes, please. You're gonna do that. First on the list is Mike Fiorello.
Mike Fiorello, 20 Red Fox Road, good evening. I am speaking as president of the Stratford Education Association. Let me start with the obvious, students need librarians. They need math and reading interventionists. And they need an alternative program. You may say, we're the town council, we simply allocate a dollar amount. The Board of Ed sets a budget as it sees fit. Well, let's be clear. The average citizen does not want to get into the weeds about ESER funding, or whose fault it is, or which board, or which superintendent made which decision. We are where we are right now. Look around. Stratford wants fully staffed schools. Not simply the unions, parents, students, and homeowners. We all recognize that a school district with fewer assistant principals, fewer math and reading coaches, and no librarians is a district on a downward spiral. This proposed budget represents a race to the bottom. It's stingy and shortsighted. Imagine trying to attract teachers to this district. Imagine trying to sell a house to a young family. Look them in the eye and tell them, this is a budget and a district to be proud of. Can you do it? Instead, I urge you to invest in our schools, be visionary, and set Stratford on an upward trajectory. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kim Perillo.
Good evening, my name is Kim Perillo and I live at 135 Barrister Road. I come before you this evening to express my concern for the Stratford Public School system. I have been a Stratford resident for fifty-five years and a product of the Stratford Public Schools. I have been a teacher for thirty-five years, sixteen here in Stratford. It is with mixed emotions that I have decided that this will be my last year teaching. I am retiring. I say mixed emotions because I love what I do. I'm excited to be with my class every day. I'm not ready to retire. I come in every day ready to face any and all challenges and make learning fun and exciting. However, I no longer feel that I can continue in a district or town that has lost its focus. The focus being that we should always be doing what's best for children. In the last five years or so, the district and town has stopped supporting the people who work daily tirelessly. The teachers, tutors, coaches, support staff, specialists, secretaries, custodians, administration. Calls for assistance, a change, a help, a different way, a new focus, enforcement of rules and consequences, go unanswered, or we're told you have enough to do what you, you have enough of what you need, make it work. Yet no one comes to visit to see if what we have is enough. The view looks just fine from the outside. We keep hearing the money is being wasted, poured into a broken system that is not working. I would like to say I do agree with part of that statement. There are broken parts of the system and there is wasted money. But in my sixteen years here in Stratford, no one has asked us what or how we think we can do differently. We are told by experts or higher-ups how to do things, or given another so-called curriculum, AKA a workbook.
One minute.
We have more topics to teach every day, but not more time. Ask someone in a school, not someone in an office. We don't need another T-shirt on opening day to feel like a team. We don't need a new program to know how to talk and help our kids. We don't need larger class sizes and less staffing. We need to be included in brainstorming decisions, ask what we think, ask what we need, have more staff to meet all needs, treated like the professionals we are. Teachers never come into this profession for the income, we are in it for the outcome. Please take a moment. Please take a moment to look out here at the people who took the time to attend this meeting. See them? They are what's best for kids. And yet they feel abandoned, beat down, defeated, left to make do, unsure, expendable, torn by the people who were chosen to lead, guide, and support them. Stratford's losing good teachers. Please pass the budget that was presented by the acting superintendent, not the budget that was presented by a very partisan, divided Board of Ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hendrick.
Mike Hendrick, 165 Brookbend Drive. Here we are again, surrounded by cries of fully fund the budget. Two years ago, we were told if we did not honor that request, we would close schools and lay off hundreds of teachers. This year, that request started at eleven point four eight percent, then six point six nine percent, then approved by the Board at three point two seven percent. That in addition to the three million from Alliance puts us at five point six seven percent. With all this in mind, we have sought, the Board of Ed has sought to craft a budget that supported our students' academic needs and the professional development of our staff, while still being considerate of our town's ability to pay. In addition to all this, we have been put in the uncomfortable position of dealing with the impending storm created by the ESER cliff. We have been forced to pull crucial positions out of that grant. To mitigate that, we have sought alternative funding through Alliance and other grants to meet these needs. Moving forward, we will continue to look for additional innovative solutions to improve our classroom performance that also reduces our financial needs. We look forward to working collaboratively with the mayor and council as we seek out the best solutions to meet our ever-changing needs of our educational system. As with all endeavors, we must continually evaluate our practices and how they are performing. Adding new layers, as we've done in the past, is not working. As leaders, we must peel back those layers to uncover the true essence of why we are here. We have a dedicated staff who only asks for the tools they need and a student body that yearns to learn. But in moving forward, we must be deliberate about our approach. As those in education know, and as Ms. Perillo just spoke, newer is always, is not always better. And for those of us on the other side, neither is more expensive. We respectfully ask for your support, that you support the Board in our endeavors and grant us the increase of three point two seven percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene Cotino.
Good evening. My name is Irene Cotino and I live at 2020 Nichols Avenue here in Stratford. I am here to speak in support of the six point sixty-nine percent budget increase. I am a proud mother of three adult sons, who are now men. Who are first-generation Americans. Growing up, the two oldest boys primarily spoke Portuguese at home. When they were sent off to school, they had a difficult time communicating and learning the primary language in English. This caused my middle son many learning difficulties and a lot of frustrations. At this time, there were no ESOL teachers or support for our Sango language learners. The progress of my son did make, was due to part of his school librarian, who provided him with books that would help him learn and practice speaking English. Additional support was provided by reading teachers whom he worked with and learned the rules of English language and always could count on them for extra help. In recent years, we have an influx of immigrants who primary language is not English, coming to our country as well as this community. It is my fear that without reading teachers to provide interventions and added support to these students, they're just being set up for failure. Furthermore, without certified librarians to help and guide these students to appropriate resources, the likelihood for success is low. As a community, we have an obligation to provide the best education to all these young people. Eliminating certified librarians and reading teachers will only hinder the progress of our growing community of ESOL students. Thank you.
Thank you. Kalen Colley. Colley? Sorry if I mess up the last names.
Kalen Colley, 251 Nichols Avenue. Good evening. It has come to my and some of my peers' attentions that the Board of Education is planning on finishing removing the role of library media specialists from Stratford Public Schools, and plans to fill those roles with tutors who will not be required to go through even half of the training current librarians have. How do you expect someone to support students and teachers when they never learn how to? How are people that never, were never prepared by college, expected to prepare me for college? I'm not a Stratford Board resident. I've only been here for half of my high school life. And I came here, when I came here, we, our, my old, whoa, our old library was as big as a classroom here. The kids would hide out in the spaces because they were unmanaged. And the gap between those in higher achieving classes and those in lower classes was tremendous. When I came here, I never imagined a library as big as ours. And it's amazing, I work in the library, it's a privilege. I earn community service hours and I love it. But this isn't just about how I feel. Today I talked, well, recently I talked with one of my brothers, a current Worcester seventh grader, and I asked him if he had ever been in his library. He told me, yeah, I went there once because my Spanish class couldn't be in our classroom. Do you not think that it's sad that a middle schooler's first time in his school library was due to displacement and not for learning? You're pushing these people, they are pushing these people out of these rooms and the libraries will be, just become rooms. And they'll have thousands of dollars of inventory that'll never be accounted for and will continue to be rooms. As I stand here today, I have already read this, almost this exact speech to the BOE, and I have not been heard. I hope today that you can hear me, because I'm always prepared to become a thorn in your side. I don't like to, but I will. I will frequent your, I will frequent your emails. I will be a pest in your mailboxes until I can safely say that my siblings' education isn't at risk. I have many and I don't need them to become pillage by the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Megan Booth. Megan Booth.
Good evening, Megan Booth, 1962 Elm Street. Our youth go to school for many reasons, to learn, to see consistent, caring faces, to have access to regular food, and to be inspired, engaged, and educated. They do not come to fail. They are not failing. In an effort to see the bigger picture, I've spent some time delving into EdSite. It's a fascinating place, full of data. I've read our town's performance report card. Our math and reading averages are very close, within six percentage points of state averages. And our decreases this year mirror state decreases. Our post-secondary readiness has increased and exceeded state standards every year since 2018. The library media specialists and Alpha play an enormous role in this success. Sixty years of research show that students who have access to libraries and the skills they acquire there result in higher test scores. Libraries prepare young students for literacy, information-seeking, and social media safety. Libraries prepare high school students for success in higher ed by teaching technology, information, and media literacy. In a world of higher ed, grades are composed of term papers and exams. Students who are not able to research and cite work will fail. It's not optional. They learn those skills with a library media specialist in high school. Students around the country are learning these skills. We are competing with those students for college placement. Why on earth are we talking about removing this vital part of our education system? It puts our students at a disadvantage compared to peers in other towns. One minute. Alpha had a ninety-six percent graduation rate last year. It may only serve a small population. But if you take those students and put them into general classrooms and they fail because they do not have the support they need, how does that affect our graduation rate? Project Uplift is not a substitute program for Alpha. It has a very different goal and execution method. At some point, we have to decide to provide our schools with the resources they need. Doing so makes our schools better. It increases our property values. It draws families to our town and our local economy. If we keep cutting necessary programs, all we do is entrench ourselves further into the Alliance. If we cut necessary and basic programs in order to secure state funding, we're band-aiding programs. It's not how we improve. Think about our students, they are not failing, but we are failing them. Please consider your responsibilities, you young. Please consider your responsibilities, you young with potential to run. Give them the six point six nine percent increase they need.
Thank you. Next is Sophia Ramlal. Just before you begin, just a quick reminder, please speak into the microphone so the, that everyone can hear you, okay? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Ramlal. I live at 100 Anson Streets, Stratford, Connecticut. I'm currently a fifth grader in Ms. Gustafson's class at Eli Whitney Elementary School. You may already know that the Board of Education has suggested eliminating library teachers, reading specialists, as well as math coaches. However, it is a district goal to increase test scores. Eliminating these key educators will only have negative impacts on the school communities. Librarians do not just read books to their classes, they help prepare their students for the future. They're the ones who teach us how to use technology, research information properly, as well as spark our interest and curiosity in reading. So why would we remove it now when it helps students thrive in reading? Another idea to save money without cuts is to go through the expenses you make and prioritize them. As a district, we can make the schools more energy efficient. This will be a huge game changer and be more cost-effective. This slight change, this slight change will have a huge impact on the town's wallet. My homeroom only uses half the lights at a time. This easy solution saves money and helps the environment. The money that is saved can go to saving our librarians, reading specialists, as well as math coaches. One of my other ideas is to cut or rework extracurricular activities that do not have a direct effect on student learning and growth. Pay-to-play or stipends for band teachers to teach lessons will be a way to reconsider saving money. However, not having librarians, reading, and math specialists will have a negative effect on our growth as students. Removing these positions will negatively impact me, my peers', academic progress, as well as social, emotional well-being. I really hope you take my ideas into consideration and think about what's best for the students of the student, of, for the future of the students in the Stratford School community. I hope you dig deep into your heart and really do what's right for the students. Show us you care and don't eliminate the teachers that do. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Ruwa. Sophia, you said you're in fifth grade?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. Sarah Ruwa, 283 Reed Street. Honorable members of the Town Council, the definition of a literacy and a math interventionist is defined as instructional leaders with specialized knowledge in the science of reading and math, evidence-based practice, English, language arts, and mathematics state standards, as well as the knowledge of how to work with educators as adult learners. It is easy to look at those two definitions and be able to make sense of where these educators can be made up for somewhere else. I am here to tell you, that simply is not possible. Last summer, my husband and I made the incredibly difficult decision to un-enroll our daughter from a private school where we were made to feel part of an amazing nurturing and supportive community of students and parents, but that was not enough. This privately paid-for education did not allow for any tiered intervention, and certainly did not include reading and math coaches. My daughter was expected to simply go to school every day and just learn. Making this decision was tough enough, exploring where to place her proved to be even tougher with a lot of, no, this isn't the place for us on our side, until we came to Will Coxon Elementary School. The reading coaches, Ms. Jen Leibowitz, Ms. Kim Stewart, and math coaches Jackie Jean Ordano were my immediate yeses. Being a Board of Ed employee, I've seen exactly what it is that they can do firsthand, and it is nothing short of extraordinary and magical, and that is exactly what they have done for my daughter. My daughter, who entered this year testing at barely above a kindergarten level in math, is now on track with a typical second-grade math curriculum. I am also more, more than proud to stand here and say that my daughter also started this year reading at only twelve words per minute with an oral fluency of sixty-seven percent. She is now reading thirty-one words per minute with an oral fluency of ninety-one percent. And it is all because of the confidence, strategies, and motivation that Ms. Leibowitz, Ms. Stewart, and Ms. Jean Ordano have given her. I have listened over the past week to the elected officials of the Board of Ed call our district ineffective, inefficient, and broken. One, in a social media post, blamed the accountability of our students for our district shortcoming. I can certainly tell you our children are anything but ineffective, inefficient, or broken, and it is because they have these people backing them, supporting them the entire way. I am asking you to fully fund a Board of Ed budget that supports these vital positions, because without them, the positive results and growth in our students just simply are not possible. Please do not make our children a bottom line that achieves the bare minimum. Please do not turn our yeses into our nos. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Kimball.
Megan Kimball, 80 Walnut Street. Good evening. I know many of you personally and have for many years, I know you are people who care about the well-being of the children in our town, so I'm here to ask you to consider increasing the funding of our schools to the Acting Superintendent's expert recommendation of six point six nine percent. I am well aware of the difficult position we are in with the budget this year, but it is unconscionable to move forward with the cuts presented by the BOE leadership. I am disheartened by the proposed cuts to so many of the programs and positions that serve to provide an equitable education to the diverse needs of our student population: Alpha, school librarians, interns from local universities, substitute funding, administrative positions, et cetera. Like many here tonight, I'm shocked at how our schools will be gutted, but I want to zero in on the recommendation to cut reading coaches from our schools. This is an unbelievable ask. These professionals serve to train teachers in curriculum and keep them in the loop on current theories in the field. In the proposed cuts, we are looking at a loss of fifteen point two reading specialists, right as the state and country are grappling with a shift in the way we teach the science of reading. These reading coaches will be the ones to help the teachers make sense of the new curriculum. They will support classroom teachers who are already overwhelmed by the changing needs of students. Having multiple coaches will allow them to also have time to pull groups of students for tiered intervention and provide extra help in order for many to access grade-level curriculum. Without this support, many of those students will move to testing and require SPED and IEP supports. This will cost the district more money. Contrary to what some of our BOE leaders have been saying, the way these programs work are not failing, but with the proposed reductions, the few coaches that are kept on will only be able to serve as interventionists, fully losing the coaching support they provide to the classroom teachers and causing more students to fall behind. This is not looking out for all children. By keeping these positions intact, they will be able to roll out new curriculum, deliver strategies to teachers, and continue to reach learners who need tiered support. We cannot lose these coaches. Now that the budget has fallen on you all, I implore you to look at the reductions with empathy and consideration for the children in our district and the people who work on their behalf. Please find a way to reduce something else. I do not know of any municipal expense more important, more grounded in equity than the right to a proper public education. Only filling, only filling the three point two seven ask would greatly undermine this right, and all the citizens of Stratford will be negatively impacted. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next is Susan Hollowell, or Hallwell.
Good evening. I'm Susan Hollowell, 545 Henry Avenue Extension, and I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of a senior in the Alpha program. They are a full-time student, they are on the honor roll, and they will be going to college. They wanted it to be known that they would not be where they are at if not for the Alpha program. In their words, "They have only been there for three years but have gained so much credit while being there. Without Alpha, I would not be getting ready for graduation, for college, and for starting a new chapter in my life. To be given this opportunity that I've always prayed for means so much to me, and I know you do not understand, but I'm hoping that you will listen. I myself have struggled with coming to school due to personal issues and my age, but as soon as I signed my forms to go to Alpha, my attendance has been improving and I've been comfortable at being at school. So many other kids struggle with this and for earning credits. Those who are choosing to remove this program do not understand what this means to us, the students. You'll be failing the students without even knowing it. I also want to say that it isn't fair to cut other things like librarians and teachers that help those of us who need it with reading and math. You're failing these students without even knowing, and I am inviting you, the council and the Board of Education, to come to Alpha, hear my story, and those of the other students, and stay a day and learn how things operate here at Alpha. I thank you for your time."
Thank you. Next is Devon Farrington Posner.
My name is Devon Farrington Posner, and I live at 76 Homestead Avenue. I'm a junior at Stratford High School, and I'm sixteen. I'm here to talk about the budget cutting of librarians and reading specialists. When we cut these positions, we are effectively cutting off our students' access to knowledge, literacy, and enrichment. This will set our students behind our peers in neighboring towns. We cannot continue to cut important public services like this, as it will have a negative effect on our students and overall community. We need to find ways to ensure that these positions stay funded and accessible to all. We are also neglecting our children's education when we cut librarians. The librarians are critical to helping our children learn how to read, learn how to use basic technology, and explore their curiosity. I know this because I am library aide with Ms. Shang almost every single school day. The next two experiences of mine were when I was a student at Chapel Street Elementary School. At this time, my librarian, Ms. Solgas, helped me learn how to navigate the library and how to find reliable research sources. Then there was my school specialist, Ms. B. M. New, also known as Ms. B. She helped spark my passion for reading and urged me to keep reading all throughout my years there and even past then. She was the person I went to talk to about my latest readings each and every school day. She was inspirational to me and impacted me then and has continued to since, as well as the thousands of other students whose paths she's crossed. They are still librarian and reading specialist there. They have even sparked my sister's interest in books as well. By cutting these services, we are actively preventing the children of our community, my peers, from developing into well-rounded adults. Without access to reading specialists and librarians, children are more likely to fall behind academically and have a hard time navigating the world around them. We must value and support these services if we truly care about the Stratford students. The notion that we should cut the funding and eliminate jobs for our well-educated and passionate specialists is not in the best interest of our public schools. We must have respect for the importance that librarians and specialists play in our community and the hard work done by them. Let's not cut corners when it comes to the education of our students. Invest in the children by investing in our specialists. It is your responsibility to prioritize education and show that you care about me and all of the other students, their future and their successful learning by giving them the resources they need. It would be nice to also hear how the Board of Ed thinks by cutting these positions, it would be beneficial to current and future students. Thank you.
Next on the list is Aubrey Buska. Aubrey Buska?
Hello and good evening. My name is Aubrey Buska, and I reside at 265 Wakeley Ave here in Stratford. I'm standing here before you tonight to talk as a taxpayer, parent, educator, and product of the Stratford Public Schools. My husband and I both attended school in town, and we have chosen to raise our four children in this community. In recent years, many stakeholders in the community came together to develop the portrait of a graduate called POG. The idea behind the POG is a community-based effort to ensure all Stratford public school graduates will be equipped with special crucial life skills that allow them to be successful members of our community. The POG aims to ensure all students will be collaborators, communicators, lifelong learners, problem solvers, and compassionate and engaged community members. In order for the POG attributes to be realized, all stakeholders must actually be in support of this mission. Supporting the elimination of staff members who work directly to help students accomplish their goals contradicts the POG model. The needs of schools shift quickly, and math and reading coaches are needed to support teachers in rapidly changing educational landscape. Coaches are one of the few roles dedicated to professional growth and supporting both student and teacher growth. Both math and reading coaches support all students in the school to ensure that all young minds have the opportunity to succeed under the POG model and out in the real world. Our elementary libraries are at the core of all the POG attributes. Librarians teach students to analyze and think critically when gathering sources of information. They teach them how to look for bias in sources and how to know which sources actually provide viable information. Our libraries are hubs for collaboration and communication. Students are taught technology and how to navigate all the Google programs that the Stratford Public Schools expect them to know in order to be successful. Elementary libraries have also focused on social, emotional learning and have incorporated many activities that encourage students to be confident in who they are and in their role in the school community. When I started my teaching twenty-three years ago, the popular slogan was well-known around Stratford: "Children first, whatever it takes." Eliminating, eliminating the librarians along with the instructional coaches will be a step backwards in putting the needs of our children first. I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and I hope that you will continue to support the librarians, coaches, and the attributes of the POG. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Michael Mezzo.
My name is Michael Mezzo. I live at 76 Peck Street, and I have very little patience for exercises and futility. That's why when I attended the Board of Ed's Finance Committee meeting last month where the four deciding members announced the breathtaking scope of their planned cuts, I knew that the eloquent entreaties of the three dissenting board members, and the students and the parents and educators who spoke in public comment, were falling on deaf ears. The decision, as one board member rightly indicated, had been made long before that night in back-channel conversations that excluded the only, only, that excluded the only board members with actual teaching experience and personal stakes in the betterment of our public schools. So I am not here to change the minds of those four board members or any of the people inside Town Hall who they're conspiring with to gut the district, motivated by petty biases, justified by bad analogies about construction that's probably pointless. I'm here as a town native and a taxpayer sick of the school, of the relentless decline of the schools that educated me. I'm here as a teacher fortunate enough to work in a district that understands its public schools are the foundation of a strong community and wants the same for his town. I'm here as the uncle of two little girls who still believe they can do anything, who don't know that four narrowly-elected leaders are set on a future for their schools in which their cherished coach won't be there to help them overcome reading challenges next year. A future in which their librarian won't be there to help them choose a new book or eventually process the maelstrom of misinformation that will be hounding them at every access point as they grow up. I'm here as someone who knows that a man with a gavel but no compassion or vision is a danger to everyone. Someone who knows that trust the process and you don't understand are the arguments of someone who forgot what they were arguing for in the first place. Someone who doesn't need a math coach to know that subtracting four million does not magically add up to more for our students. Someone who is amazed to hear the same people who rail against the past use of relief grants to fund vital personnel to try to silence our outrage by assuring us they will fund the same positions and programs with different temporary grants. I'm here because even though I have no patience for exercises and futility, I refuse to sit back and be treated like a fool. I hope that whatever concessions these bad actors have already planned as part of their process of manipulation include enough money to get our students through the next school year without even more devastating losses in learning, but no matter what final sum is approved, I have faith that everyone here, when it comes time to vote new town leaders, will remember how catastrophic this board majority and their self-serving agenda has been.
Lucy Babbitt? Lucy Babbitt?
It's a hard act to follow. Hi, my name is Lucy Babbitt, and I live at 141 Brightwood Avenue. I have been a public elementary school teacher for twenty-three years. My two children went through the Stratford School System, and now I have a grandson who will too in about four years. will too in about four years. First, I do want to add my voice to those opposed to the appalling motion to cut librarians. Elementary school librarians especially, I know I'm biased, but they are arguably the fundamental building blocks of all literacy. Diminishing their role will absolutely lower the educational level of Stratford kids. I also want to add my... and again, this is personal experience, but lowering the budget for substitute teachers will mean that subs, which are crazy hard to find in the best of times, will not come to Stratford. Personal experience as an elementary's teacher especially, my husband teaches high school, subs there, it's not such a big deal, they put on a movie, they go to study hall. In elementary schools, they have to have boots on the ground. When there are no substitute teachers, what happens is they split the classes. The lesson that you had worked so hard to prepare, you can no longer do it. Suddenly, your careful plans are in disarray, there are more children, there are different issues, the class can be ridiculously crowded. It is a wasted day for the children. Now, if this happens now and then, it's not such a big deal. But when this happens again and again and again, and this will happen in Stratford if you do not have a budget to pay substitute teachers, they will go to other districts.
One minute.
The educational level will suffer. The scores that often label how good a town is, those will suffer. As someone mentioned before, families with young children will not look to Stratford to come. If you care, if Stratford cares for its students, as I know you do, they cannot slash the budget for librarians or for substitute teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Myron Dominguez? Grace Myron Dominguez?
Good evening. My name is Grace Myron Dominguez. I live at 125 Ferry Boulevard, and I'm a sophomore at Stratford High School. Once again, I'm here to advocate for what is fair and equitable for the students of Stratford. I respectfully request that the Town Council fund the Board of Education with the proper amount of funding that the acting superintendent requested of 6.69%. I have a question for the council. How important is a world-class education? The answer: immeasurable. Given the ever-changing face of education, we need to be competitive. We need to give students every resource they need to successfully navigate through school and decide their path so that they are equipped to tackle an advanced higher education system, trade, or service opportunities. I did some research over the last few weeks looking at what the top high schools in Connecticut offer their students. First and foremost, they all have librarians and tutors. They all have open maker spaces in guess where? Their libraries, where the library staff teaches students how to use the technology. They have technology hubs in guess where? Their libraries. I only get three minutes, so let me state this simply. Librarians, tutors, teaching staff, school employees, and innovative programs are imperative to the success of a school system. To cut this, to not invest in me, in my classmates, and our future, is short-sighted. But let's talk numbers for a minute. Do you know what the top school districts in Connecticut have in common? They invest in their education system. Westport School District, sixty-three percent of the budget was allocated to education. Ridgefield School District, sixty-one percent of the budget was allocated to education. We're talking about the best of the best. We're talking about the Tom Cruise Top Gun of school districts. You could be on that list, and you could make that happen. The acting superintendent suggests 6.69% is the bare minimum increase you should allocate, and that still means there will be cuts. You want to be bold and make a statement? Approve a seven percent increase. Tell this town, this state, future home buyers, future doctors, future servicemen and women that their education matters in Stratford. Fun fact... You might want to grab a pen for this one. Since 2008, the Stratford Board of Education budget has increased by forty-three point one one percent. Let me repeat that. Forty-three point one one percent increase since 2008. That's a huge percentage, but guess what? The municipal side of the budget has increased by forty-seven point five five percent since 2008. That's a four point four four percent higher than the increase in education. This proves that the expenses are increasing everywhere. If the town advances, then let's advance education and fund it the way it should be funded. Stratford should be working to advocate and actively ensure equitable opportunities for all students in this diverse community. Stratford needs to take actions to strengthen their schools, will then strengthen the community and local economy. And also remember that in seven hundred and eighty-eight days, I'll be down in the registrar's office registering to vote.
Thank you. Next on the list is Patricia Collagen-Kuligan-Lavine. Sorry if I mispronounced that one.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to make sure everybody can hear me. Can everybody hear me? No. Okay. Okay, that works? Okay. I will... I live at 60 Birch Place. I'm a retired clinical social worker. I worked in the healthcare field for about fifty years. So everything that I'm listening to sounds so much like hospitals, it's frightening. My husband and I moved here three years ago. There's only one data point that I really knew about the school system when we moved in, when we were looking at houses, and it was the... the published standing of the school system in Stratford. And there was some other data that I've learned that I really want everybody to hear. I'm sure people have seen this different times. The teachers are probably very tired of hearing this, but we all need to hear this together. So on the websites for real estate, the best score for a school in Stratford is five. There's a school that's four of ten. So we're either five of ten or we're four of ten. There's an elementary school that's a four. We are members of the C... the Connecticut Alliance District, and why are we that? Because we're one of the least lowest-performing schools in Connecticut. That's not anything to be proud of. And we are asking for a six point six nine budget just to be the status quo, just to stay here. The reading and math in our elementary schools, we have twenty-two percent of our children are proficient in math. Thirty-three percent in elementary are reading. In high school, nineteen percent of our kids are proficient in math. Forty-six percent of them in reading, and that's probably comes with a lot of work from a lot of people to get to forty-six. I add to this that thirteen point five percent of our children in Stratford are below poverty level. That's one in eight children. We all need to know this. And as we also know, as all of us professionals and parents, the only way that our kids can succeed and become successful adults is through education. Whether you're rich or poor, it doesn't matter. I'm not going to go into what we're cutting because the parents and the teachers can tell you that even more than I can about what that impact is. But I will tell you that no job is going to go away. However you cut people, these people will have to do the job. The work will not go away, no matter who you cut. Somebody has to do the job.
Thank you.
Am I done?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to report the Board of Ed for a minute.
We're doing three minutes. We have a lot of speakers still on the list.
Okay, okay. I just think they're incredibly hypocritical.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Next on the list is John Tarka. John Tarka?
Good evening. I'm John Tarka, 500 Pilgrim Lane. This is my son Trey. I know I only have three minutes, I'm not going to be using up all three minutes. I'm not here to talk about how the budget cuts guarantee we can't meet the needs of our children, we know that. Many students will suffer due to coaches, tutors, and interventionists being cut. I'm not going to talk about how the budget cuts mean our library media specialists can't help our students navigate their world, understand digital literacy, make sure not they're being exploited. We know those library media specialists are so important in making sure our students aren't vulnerable in an ever-changing world. I'm not going to talk about how we're viewed as a joke by other towns. With this situation, we're making our schools less safe, our professionals less supported, and the same people who complain about the school's quality going down are the same ones that are participating in the downfall right now. That's the Republican way. That doesn't have to be your way. What I do want to talk about is this. Almost to the day, four years ago, our whole world shut down. Then we realized just how important our educators were. Remember that? Now, four years later, we're showing how quickly we forget that. What I do want to talk to you is about how the Town Council can do what the Board of Education failed to do. Listen to the experts. Listen to the educators, the personnel who we trust to work with our students, who families come to this town because we represent hope and opportunity. Listen to the experts. Where the Board has failed us, you could save us. It's not too late. Take the time to sit together and find a way. That's what educators do, they find a way. Principals, teachers, tutors, coaches, interventionists, they all find a way every day. Remember that when you go to bed tonight: Did I find a way? I'm a stubborn optimist. I believe you can find a way. We've been leaving you. It's not too late. Look at each other, meet and discuss ways to address this. Don't think about politics or party lines. Think about the little kids in our town who ride bikes on your street. They're the one who are depending on you. They're the one that needs you to do what's right. You're on the Town Council because you care about our town. You care about the community, you care about the families. You still have a chance to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Unilis Rivera-Garcia. Unilis Rivera-Garcia? Might have butchered that. I apologize.
Hi, my name is Juneli Rivera-Garcia. I live in 122 Norton Street, and I'm a sixth grader in Second Hill Lane. Today, I'm giving my opinion in why teacher personal cut should not happen. First, these teachers were really... work really hard, and they deal with students with autism, ADHD, and so much more. These teachers are really important to students, and they... Sure. Hi, my name is Juneli Rivera-Garcia. I... I live in 122 Norton Street, and I'm a sixth grader in Second Hill Lane. Today, I'm giving my opinion in why teacher personal cut should not happen. First, these teachers work really hard and deal with students with autism, ADHD, and so much more. These teachers are really important to students, and they work really hard for our education. They deal with kids who don't listen to them and students who don't show their respect for the teachers. They help a lot of students when they need it, and only having a few teachers is not really good for us, us students. There will be less help and more work for other teachers, which could lead to headaches. The teachers stay up late grading and planning the next day of school for us. Thank you for your time, and I hope you enjoyed it.
Thank you. Zoe Looney?
Hi, my name is Zoe Looney, and I live in 1139 Main Street, Stratford. I am from Honduras, and I went, go to USA, I moved to Stratford. I went to Second Hill Lane. When I came, I spoke no English. And now, I do thanks to my reading teachers because they helped me in everything what I need. We need your library, teachers, and coach, please.
Thank you. Katie Cable? Katie Cable? Or Kobel, maybe?
There we go. Hello, my name is Catherine Kobel. I am... I live at 398 Allendale Drive. I am here to speak the words of another student at Stratford High School who could not be here today. Dear adults who are in charge, hello. My name is Skina Florian. I am an eleventh grader attending Stratford High who is deeply concerned by the Stratford Board of Education's recent decision to cut our librarians' budgets. The library has been indispensable in my high school career. I remember during my freshman year, we were expected to write a three-page, minimum, research paper, MLA format, including citations. The ability to write such a paper seemed so out of reach to my fourteen-year-old self, a daunting task that I'd end up shedding many tears over. The media specialist of my school taught me not only how to use online databases, correctly use citations, format my essay, utilize the technological tools we have available, but she also indirectly gave me the confidence to try a new thing. She gave me the comfort of knowing I'd have a place to go and a person who knows what they're doing for help outside of class. The experience was very formative for me. Fresh out of the COVID mentality, I struggled to believe in myself and to trust that I could ask for help and receive it. Teachers are great, but they're busy and have many students across multiple classes. The level of attentiveness that can be provided by librarians isn't something we should take for granted. I worry to think about the struggles our future high school students will have to go through unnecessarily should the Board of Education choose to cut off such a crucial aspect of schooling. Today, I am an A-average student in multiple AP classes that aspires to pursue higher education in some sort of STEM field. I fear I would not be what I am without the school's librarian. I would not... I would not have the sense of accomplishment that followed after submitting that essay through the help of my school's librarian. Additionally, the technology I taught... I was taught to use in my freshman year remains useful to this day. Best regards, Skina Florian.
Thank you. It is 6:56, so what we're going to do is we're going to recess our public forum now. We will gavel into our... our actual Town Council meeting at seven. We'll recess that meeting, and then we'll come back to the public forum after we're done with our agenda for the night, okay? All right, so we stand in recess.
All right, so we stand in recess. It is 7 o'clock. We are going to call our town council meeting to order. And now that we have, now that we have come to order on our meeting, we have decided we are going to recess our meeting now and then, I don't need a motion, and let the public reconvene the public forum. So, I'm going to recess the town council meeting now and I will call back to order our public forum. Next on the list is Kendall Navarro. Kendall Navarro? Okay. Rochelle Duran? Rochelle Duran?
That's not fair. No, that's not fair. You can't change it after everybody left. They left, you go take the break.
Fine, that's, listen, that's fine. We were just trying to help everybody, guys, there's some kids on the list, so we'll go ahead and then we are going to recess our public forum again, okay? All right, now we'll call back to order. We're going to call back to order our town council meeting at 7:02. All right, I'd like to invite Councilman Green to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Green, if you would.
March is Women's History Month, so I wanted to take a moment to recognize all the women working every day to make our town what it is. Thank you to all Stratford women who have and continue to make history, contributing to the legacy of this great town. For the invocation, I give thanks that Stratford has so many people who care, many of whom are sitting out in the audience and up here tonight. I pray that as a council, as the council approaches the difficult task of carefully weighing the needs of our community to craft a budget best suited to address them, that we listen thoughtfully, reflect deeply, and come together meaningfully to pave a path forward that is fair and equitable. I pray that our work will reflect the will of the community and that it will allow Stratford to prosper now and for generations to come. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into the agenda tonight, I want to thank Mr. Green for identifying that it's Women's History Month. I too want to recognize that March is Women's History Month. The journey of women in our community and in our nation is integral to the success that we have here together. In our community, the lessons of the past have brought us to a place where it is absolutely beyond doubt that women are leading and shaping our future in this town of Stratford. We have so many dedicated women leaders in this town, and I'd like to take a few minutes to recognize as many of them as we can that are here tonight. And bear with me, this is a very long list and we should be very proud of that. So first, I'd like to recognize our strong, passionate, and dedicated mayor, Mrs. Lawyer Hoydic. We also, we also have our amazing councilwoman, Ms. Gibson, Ms. Widham, and Ms. Shake. And we have here a number of our department heads, and Stratford is incredibly impressive with the number of women, there we go, women department heads that we have. We have Renee Sarah from Public Works, Andrea Boisavant from the Department of Health, Community Services and Senior Services Director Tammy Trojanowski. Dawn Savo is our Finance Director, Mary Dean is the Economic Director, Susan Pollak is our Town Clerk, and our Acting Superintendent Heather Borges is also here. I did see in attendance some of our community partners, too. We have Sherri Zemansky as the Library Director, and Amanda Meason was here from Sterling House. And we also have another number of other elected officials that are women leaders as well. We have State Representative Laura Danchow, our Board of Ed, Ms. Bedell, Ms. D'Angelo Powers, and Ms. Fabian, I believe I saw them all here tonight. And we also have on our Land Use Boards and Commissions, Ms. Graham, Ms. Lambert, Ms. Manus, Ms. Sweeley, and Ms. Lynch. Our town is incredibly fortunate to have women leading us and taking us to the future. I know that we're all so proud of where we are and where we're going, and I just want to thank all of our women leaders here tonight, so thank you for making us a better community. Move on into our agenda. We have first our approval of minutes. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Rilia?
I believe that the reading of the minutes will be spent with the amendment.
Approved. Mr. O'Connor, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes, just a correction. I had issued to the, sorry, number two, the general representation of the work, second amendment, just to add, Lady Mayor, we're going to do a little bit of that.
All right, so is there a second to that amendment?
A second.
Okay. Any, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passes. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment, the minutes passed, thank you.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
I'm sorry to do this. One of the women-elected representatives, I believe on zoning, Ms. Manus, is also here this evening. She wasn't listed in the recognition.
Oh, I believe I, if I, if I ever saw it, I thought, I had her on my list, so, okay. Okay. Ms. Manus, thank you. Communications, bills, and petitions, we did receive a notification of resignation from Ms. Jess Robbins dated February 23rd, 2024. She's resigning from the Waterfront and Harbor Commission. Item number four, the mayor's report. Madam Mayor, to you.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome, everyone, it's nice to see you all here. I'm honored to present the town budget for the 25 fiscal year. This is a result of collaborative effort with input from department heads, community stakeholders, and ensuring that every dollar is allocated wisely and efficiently to provide the best service to Stratford residents and businesses. We continue to streamline processes and enhance services with the concerns of residents and taxpayers top of mind. When I took office in late 2017, there was an incredible need for tax relief for our residents. This obligation to our taxpayers continues year after year, and my administration was able to reduce taxes for the first five years and keep the increase last year to a minimum while addressing the town's financial obligations due to the economic climate we felt and continue to feel today. The proposed budget for the 25 fiscal year is $260,014,370, which is a 2.21% increase over the 24 fiscal adopted budget. Through the use of other revenue sources, this year's proposed budget will not increase taxes nor the 20.20 mil rate, and the vehicle mil rate will stay at 32.46, which is capped by the state statute. The proposed budget not only supports our town departments, but also prioritizes the efficient delivery of services to our residents with an emphasis on one of the greatest impacts to our community, the advancement of our schools and students. Much of the direction and growth of the town depends on the success of our schools, and we must provide our students with the building blocks to forge bright futures. As a graduate and a mother of graduates of Stratford Public Schools, a former Board of Education and member chair, and as someone who comes from a family of dedicated educators, I personally understand the imperative need to support our students, teachers, and staff. The proposed town budget for the 25 fiscal year fully funds the operating request by the Stratford Board of Education and Stratford Public Schools Administration. The total proposed budget for the Stratford Public Schools of $129,2725, which is slightly higher than the original request, this does not include the governor's proposed additional education cost share grant of $3,060,000, which will pass through the town and be sent to the schools. The proposed budget addresses the district's financial obligations to fill the void of the ESAR grant funding used by the previous administration to fund $2.5 million of regular staff positions, and will provide necessary resources, infrastructure, and support to those who work tirelessly to improve the academic achievement and social and emotional well-being of our students. The proposed budget is a commitment by the town to moving our students, our schools, and our community forward. It's been refreshing to collaboratively work with the school administration on the condition and the improvement of Stratford Public Schools. While serving as a Board of Education member, we work to have the library media specialist and building base specialist in each school. I don't want to eliminate these positions and would rather work out the budgeting and funding details to allow them to remain employed in the Stratford Public Schools. We will continue to work through May as we fine-tune the requests for funding for our school district. I look forward to continuing to work with the school administration, Board of Education, and the town council to provide the necessary funding to all town departments, and I'm confident that this proposed budget represents a fiscally sound path forward for Stratford. This month, the town recognized Women's History Month and honors all the contributions and achievements made by women over the course of history, especially our country's history. Much of the contributions and hard work went unrecognized and undervalued, so it's important that this month and throughout the year that we remember to be grateful for the women who paved the way of where we are today. It is also a time to be mindful of women today who make history and progress so that future generations of women may even have more opportunities and successes. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge many of the women leaders of our town and all the women who work with our town and serve our community with incredible dedication, thoughtfulness, and compassion. As part of Women's History Month, we shared the Proclamation of International Women's Day this past Friday and shared the story of a woman who through her work in Stratford during World War II inspired the creation of Rosie the Riveter. Rosalind, or Roz, as her friends called her, joined the approximately 5 million women who bolstered the country's labor force as the men joined the military to fight in World War II. Women were filling the wartime labor gap, taking over riveting and manufacturing jobs typically reserved for men at the time. Roz was recruited to work at Vaught Aircraft Stratford, a factory in Stratford, where she drove rivets into the Corsair fighter planes. A newspaper column about her inspired, morale-boosting 1942 song that turned her into the first legendary Rosie the Riveter, the archetype of the hard-working woman in overalls and a bandana-wrapped hair who kept the military factories humming. Written by Red Evans and John Jacob Loeb, Rosie the Riveter captured a historical moment that helped sow the seeds of the women's movement of the last half of the 20th century. This led to the iconic Rosie the Riveter "We Can Do It" poster, created in 1943, making Rosalind the first of many Rosies to have inspired an image that still remains a key symbol of female empowerment more than 80 years later. Moving on, our Health Department is holding their last Know Your Numbers event on Wednesday, March 13th at the YMCA from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Come take advantage of the screenings for blood pressure, blood sugar, and waist circumference. I don't think I'm really interested in that, but, but we also will be providing free COVID test kits and any of our remaining radon test kits. The department's joint venture with Senior Services to get the word out and get residents vaccinated against COVID and flu is coming to a close. Together with funding from the National Council on Aging, they provided well over 800 vaccines through 27 clinics serving 21 homebound residents. They assisted over 157 residents with transportation and/or scheduling to vaccine appointments. Community Services and Senior Services, AARP is limited appointments for income tax preparation at the Baldwin Center, and there are limited appointments at the South End Community Center for the IRS Vito income tax preparation. Representatives from United Illuminating, Southern Connecticut Gas, Operation Fuel, and Alliance for Community Empowerment were at Baldwin Center last month and assisted over 85 individuals with heating and utility assistance. Community volunteers led by the Brown family are hosting an Easter dinner at 12 noon at the Baldwin Center. Reservations are required and may be made by calling the Baldwin Center directly. Community Services is offering free suicide prevention training on March 13th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Birds Eye Municipal Complex. Participants will learn how to recognize warning signs of suicide, know how to offer hope and get help. Call Community Services to register. Under Economic Development, the Army Engine Plant is scheduled hopefully for a closing or a conveyance in April, and we're meeting with them at the end of March in preparation for that conveyance. Contract plating, HRP is moving forward with a Phase III and prioritizing testing and removal of the six stockpiles. MetroCog will cover the costs of sampling and permitting. The RDA has approved $5,000 towards the removal of the stockpiles. Our zoning regulations update and rewrite. The Planning and Zoning Office is working with SLR Consulting to update the existing zoning regulations. The first community engagement session was a public open house in September, and the next engagement session will be a roundtable workshop in the spring of '24, the date to be announced. The Performing Arts Center property, the town, through the structural firm Spiegel and Partners, will be hosting a public outreach input session either at the end of March or the beginning of May, so stay tuned, I'm sorry, beginning of April. And the Economic and Community Development Commission will be hosting a joint commissions meeting with representatives of all towns' commissions. This is proving very productive. This has proven very productive and effective in the past, and it is an opportunity for representative, representatives of the various commissions to learn about the work of the Economic and Community Development Commission. Likewise, it's an opportunity for the Economic and Community Development Commission to gain insight into the work of the other commissions. Ultimately, it helps the commissions work together for the betterment of the town. Once sponsorship has been confirmed, the Town Council members will receive an invitation. On March fifth, the BP gas station on twenty-three-seventy Stratford Avenue officially opened, and we had a ribbon cutting. This was a formal, former brownfield property that has been transformed into a productive business and added back to the town's tax rolls. On March thirteenth, we'll be cutting a ribbon at the Two Roads Tea Box, sixteen-twenty-five Stratford Avenue, also a new business. And on April, and on March fourteenth, we're busy this week, at twenty-four-twenty Main Street, Rachel's Hair Boutique will have a ribbon cutting as well. Commercial property sales, we had six-ninety Surf Avenue to Thomas E. Rogan for four hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars on February fourteenth with a conveyance tax of a thousand fifty-nine dollars. And twenty-three-ninety-nine to twenty-four-nineteen Main Street to T LRS Properties LLC for two-point-eight-five million dollars, and that happened on February ninth. The conveyance for that, uh, property was seven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Celebrate Stratford is on the website, all the events, www.celebratestratford.com. Restaurant Week was a great success and fe- and featured the coveted Golden Fork Award, and that value for those gift cards was twelve hundred dollars. The next festival event is Stratford Main Street Festival, which is June first. Appointments, Louise Palumbo to the Commission on Aging, uh, she is completing Dale McClanahan's term, which is ending July twentieth, twenty-twenty-fourth, and Melissa Redding is a district representative for the Commission on Aging, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Questions for the mayor. Mr. Green.
Mayor, I was excited to learn that as the current president of CCM, you've joined the One Hundred Nineteen Thousand Commission, representing Stratford. I'd like to read that announcement and then answer questions. Today, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities announced the establishment of the One Hundred Nineteen Thousand Commission, a body parts group of leaders throughout Connecticut working together to identify and develop a comprehensive, long-term strategy to reduce the number of at-risk disconnected young people. A core part of this initiative is recognition of the lifelong consequences for individuals and communities when students do not have the necessary resources and support to complete their education. I was also excited to hear in your summary of the budget that you were proposing a budget that focused on education and that fully funded the schools according to, um, both the Stratford Board of Education and SPS administration. However, when I look in this packet, what I see is a request that is granting the request of the board, which, having been at the Board of Ed, having listened to the public comment there, having listened to, um, many members of the board other than the majority, and having listened to, um, the school administrators both in public and private, I haven't heard any sense that that three-point-two gives a fully funded budget that is one that is going to leave us on track to not have alchemics, not have librarians, not have, uh, as many reading and math coaches. So my question to you is, is how does this budget reflect the values of that commission that you're joining?
So the values of the commission or the priorities of the commission is the disconnected youth, those that don't attend school, those that are not functioning, and that we, um, of those hundred and nineteen thousand youths that the Dalio Commission identified, finding sources and pathways for them to move forward. Two very different things, Mr. Green, and I understand that you're new to this. Ladies and gentlemen, please. This process, and again, I know you're new to this, starts off with the recommendation of this. I'm very, very happy that I still have my mother's teacher look that can quiet a room. Thank you very much. So. So. The point of, um...
Excuse me, excuse me. This is, it is not an interactive, uh, process. I, I understand, we have public forum where you can come to speak. Um, we, we have the councilman address the mayor, the mayor responds. Um, if you could please let that process, uh, work through with some decorum, that would be preferential. It, it makes everything most, go more smoothly and makes this a working process. Thank you. Madam Mayor, you understand how to use the microphone, I, I'm sure.
Thank you, Chairman. So the, the process is, the Board of Education makes a recommendation to me, I put together the budget and refer to you. At this point in time, I have provided more than the Board of Education requested with the intent of working with the school administration, the superintendent of schools, just like we have been, about how to best fill these gaps. There is a process that she has to go through, uh, working with the State Department of Education for the alliance funding, and I think most of these positions will be filled through the alliance grant, that three million sixty thousand that I talked about. Um, and so there won't be a need to eliminate staffing, and I'm very happy to say that we won't have to close a school. So this is a process that will be determined, and we all, we all should take part in it. Thank you, Mr. Green.
We will get some back from the alliance, but my best understanding is even with the alliance, we will still under this budget have a cut.
We'll go around to the next question. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Afraid.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Um, you just mentioned that you put together this budget for us, and, uh, looking back over past records, it appears that the mill rate and the budget amount was also included in the agendas ahead of the meetings in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, and twenty-twenty. However, this information was not included in the documents provided to the Town Councilors before the Town Council meeting. In past practice, through my observation, the Bonding and Capital Improvement Plan budget was also provided to the council at the same time as the mayor's proposed budget. The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, commonly referred to as CAFER, is also not being provided to the council as we begin our process, our budget process, despite Councilwoman Sheik's request through Council, Council Chairman Glad. Why was this crucial information not prepared and included in a more timely manner to the Town Council? And will it be printed and distributed to the council and posted to the town website before our, we begin our budget workshops next week so the public can also review the information?
Can you hear me? Through you, Chair, um, what was not, what will, will what be distributed?
So what I'm asking for is, are you going to be distributing your proposed budget? Are you going to be posting it online as well?
Yes, we will be posting it online. You asked about the capital improvement plan. That has not been distributed with the budget most recently. That's done after the budget, um, has been distributed to you because it's a separate process, and you also asked about the CAFER, which is also the audit, which is not completed at this time, and as soon as it's completed, each council member gets a copy, and all of this is put online.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Can y'all hear me?
Sorry. I'm gonna go to Mr. Mr. Rilia had tried to chime in before, so Mr. Rilia, please.
Thank you to the mayor. Question about the recent cancellation of the FARA program with Sikorsky Aircraft. Have we had any communication, um, with the, our state's congressional people about that? Have they reached out to us? I'm just curious.
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question. Um, no, I have not heard anything from this, the federal delegation about not getting the contract for FARA.
Are we planning, are we planning to reach out to them? Do you know?
Through, through you, uh, yes, I've been in touch with the president of Sikorsky. He's called me to talk to me about the sta- the status of employment and contracts and what they're working on now, the Black Hawk resurgence, but, um, I have not spoken to our representatives or our senators about this.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gibson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and, um, happy Women's National, International. Um, so in looking back at the past budgets, um, there were details and aggregated information through the past years that actually, um, with the actual spending by category, the municipal, the debt, education, and pension, uh, were available as part of the overview. Um, so in the last few years, looking at the budget, um, the summaries, the detailed summaries and revenue, um, but it seems like there's no similar summaries and, um, the proposed expenditures for the, uh, current year, uh, or for, um, any information regarding the past years. We're just looking for, um, a reason why it's not the same as it used to be.
It is, it is the same. Through you, Council Chair, it is the same.
It is. So it says, um, why do the current budgets not, um, include this reporting, though it does? But we just got it this today, so.
Right, you got it today. It's due tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and I think, uh, Councilman Affria alluded to the fact that in previous years, um, at the council meeting, there had been copies of the reports, and that's because at the council meeting, or shortly there, right before, the, um, budgets were due, because they're due on March twelfth.
Okay.
And since today's the eleventh, I thought I would give them to you today. We just got the Board of Education's proposed budget on Friday, so that's why, after your pony had been, uh, delivered or sent to you, so that's why we gave it to you today, and it is in the same format that it has been in previous years. But we also have the opportunity to go through all of these things at the workshops and the schedules that'll be, uh, determined and distributed to you later, um, this week.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking forward to the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor. This is my fifth budget process, um, sitting down, um, with you and your administration. When we arrived here and, you know, our packets were sitting here, I looked through it to find, um, what the allocation is through your proposal for the Board of Ed, and either through you or through, uh, Mr. Timniak or Ms. Sabo, whomever can answer. This year, for the Board of Ed, there's a line that's described as a non-lapsing funds from balance of unspent town funds fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, and the amount for that is two million dollars. So my, my question to you, or whomever can answer the question, um, are these the surplus funds, I'm just trying to understand what I'm looking at, are these the surplus funds from the previous year that went back to the general fund that are now being allocated over towards the Board of Ed? I'm just trying to figure that out.
Through you, Chair, yes, those are the, um, non-lapsing funds that can only be given to the Board of Ed through the council.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up question?
So, uh, let's go around and see if anyone else has questions, and we can get to seconds. Are there any other questions? All right, then, Ms. Sheik, you're back on.
Thank you. So with the percentage increase, because this was, uh, an issue last year, the percentage increase that's listed, um, on this page for the Board of Ed is a four-point-seven-nine percent. However, um, with the ECS funding and the non-lapsing funds, is that counted as part of the town's operational budget that's being allocated towards the Board of Ed? Or, in past practice, because in the beginning of our budget book, it's, um, delineated as part of the state funds that are coming in, so I'm just trying to figure out what the actual percentage is of the contribution from our town operating budget towards the Board of Education. Is it a four-point-seven-nine percent, or is it Board of Education this year proposed by, by you and your administration of a hundred and twenty-seven million roughly versus last year of a hundred and twenty-four million dollars, which is, my math is not perfect, I apologize, about one-point-one percent or somewhere around there?
Through you, Chair. So that's why we have the budget workshops. So the, uh, request from the Board of Education was three-point-two-seven percent, which is, we funded slightly more than that. The ECS money from the state is five million, one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. That's added here, plus the two million dollars of non-lapsing funds, and it all comes out to four-point-seven-nine percent.
So through you, Mr. Chairman. So last year, when we had our budget workshops and we got our actual budget books from, um, from you, the line item just read Board of Education. Underneath that was one additional line item, Alliance District Funding Direct to Board of Ed. So I can't wait to get to the budget workshops, um, but I'm, I can't, I'm sure, but in fully walking through, I guess my, my request, I'll make it public now, is in the non-lapsing funds that are being sent over towards the Board of Ed, um, where from the past fiscal year exactly those funds are coming from? Are they from ECS? Are they from the direct operational surplus? That's my request, just so that there's that level of transparency that I think many people are asking for.
Through you, Chair, and that's why the budget workshops are so critical, so you can go into these in detail and not here, but I will tell you that the two million dollars of non-lapsing funds came from the surplus of the Board of Education from last fiscal year. The ECS money, also coined as Alliance Now, but it's, what, there is no mistake, it is ECS. That's the education cost sharing that is allotted to the town, and that money is that five million, one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars from the previous two years plus the three-hundred-and-sixty million. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. The Town Attorney's report.
Thank you, Chairman Glad. My report for the month of February is that, uh, my office opened two personal injury claims and two new property damage claims. We recovered approximately thirty-five thousand dollars in three property damage claims to town property or vehicles. We recovered approximately ten thousand dollars in a blight matter and recovered three thousand dollars in an animal control case. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, agenda item number five, there is no new, or no old business, sorry, uh, agenda item number six, ordinances and resolutions. Six-point-one is our ordinances.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the, um, purposes of discussion and to begin the, um, budget workshop purpose, purpose, purposes, process, sorry, um, I move that item six-point-one-point-one in ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty-twenty-four be referred to the ordinance committee.
Mr. O'Neill. The motion's been seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose an amendment, that being that we move that the item be amended to reflect the sum of two-hundred-and-sixty million, fourteen thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy dollars, where appropriate.
Is there a second? Mr. O'Neill, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of approving the amendment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And all in favor of referring to the ordinance committee, uh, item six-point-one-point-one as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. All right, six-point-one-point-two.
Mr. Chairman, um, uh, again, for purposes of discussion and to begin the workshop process, I move that item six-point-one-point-two in ordinance adopting tax REITs for both the grand list for taxable property and taxable motor vehicle property be referred to the ordinance committee.
Mr. Allen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yeah, once again, um, knowing that these numbers are not the final number... Yeah, once again, knowing that these numbers are not the final numbers, I will second that motion, so that we can get started with the workshop.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that Paragraph A of the item be amended to reflect the amount of $42.46 million for the grant list for taxable property, and Paragraph B of the item be amended to reflect the amount of $32.46 million for the grant list for taxable motor vehicle property.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, once again.
Okay, so, we need to add an additional amendment for the section at the top of Page Three, whereas the estimated revenues of the town of Stratford, other than taxation for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, are $59,635,475.
Thank you, Mr. Wellen. Is there a second? Mr. O'Neal.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The amendment passes. All in favor of approving the ordinance? Oh, I thought Alvin, Al- He did, okay. Any discussion on the ordinance as amended? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance is referred to the ordinance committee. Thank you. 6.2, Resolutions. 6.2.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move Item 6.2.1, accepting a grant in the amount of $7,500, with a town match of $905, for the town clerk to preserve historical documents, be approved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Mr. Aurelia, seconds that. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution passes. All right. We move on to new business. 7.1, Referrals from Public Works Committee. 7.1.1.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Luellen.
I move that Item 7.1.1, an increase in the amount of $10,400 for the Benell Parking Lot be approved.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Mr. Aurelia, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 7.1.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aurelia.
I move that Item 7.1.2, a contract for drainage at Veterans Park, in the amount of $36,800 be approved.
Is there a second? Mr. Wellen, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, 7.2, referred by the Building Needs Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Woodham. 7.2.1, Ms. Woodham.
I move that Item 7.2.1, a contract for elevator modernization at Town Hall, in the amount of $283,848 be approved.
Is there a second? Mr. Green, seconds. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 7.2.2.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I move that the purchase of 7.2.2, the purchase of the Wilcoxen School Window refurbished products and services from Window Services Incorporated of Holliston, Mass., in the amount of $37,486.24 be approved.
Is there a second? Ms. Woodham, seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, 7.2.3.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Neal, again.
Yes. I motion that the drawing project manual and cost estimate, all dated 2/21/2024, for submission to the State Department of Administration Services as part of the grant application and plan review for the alteration project at Franklin Elementary School, State Project Number 23 D A S Y 138113 A 0623 be approved.
Is there a second? Ms. Gibson, seconds. Any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you. Excuse me, for this particular item, the cost estimate, all dated 2/21/24, what was the cost? There's no dollar amount.
Mr. Luellen, you're Chair of the Committee.
I don't believe they're needing numbers, it's just kind of an estimate to be done, and this is part of kind of like a multi-step process that we need to go through with DAS before we even go out for contract for engineering services, and then after we have the design done, we'll then be able to put pricing to the project.
Ms. Shake.
Thank you. So, thank you for the explanation, Councilman. The cost estimate is then, do we know what the cost estimate is, roughly?
So, I have a question, then, because it says here that it's dated, the cost estimate is dated 2/21/24, as if it was already estimated.
Chair recognizes Ms. Gibson. Mr. Wellen.
So, apparently, the terminology applies to this whole package of documentation, and that's the way that the architect, Brian Snyder, explained to us, and that's the way he kind of shepherds all of these town projects through the Office of School Facilities work frame that exists up in Hartford.
I would just comment, then, that any further estimates coming through should have a dollar amount presented to the council for us to approve, just as a request.
Thank you, Ms. Shake. I believe this is part of just a process to get the cost estimates where we are. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah. I just would like to make sure that we get an estimate at the next meeting of something that replicates some information, so that we could present it to the public before I second the motion the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Would you like to withdraw the motion, or keep your second? Okay. Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. 7.2.4. Does anybody? 7.2.4.
Mr. Chairman, on 7.2.4, I'd like to make a motion to accept the drawing project manual and cost estimate, all dated 2/21/24, for the submission to the State Department of Administration Services as part of the grant application and plan review for the alterations project at Wilcoxen Elementary School, State Project Number 23 D A S Y 138114 A 0623.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
You should ask for clarification from the movement. Movement T asks that it be accepted, I think he means approved.
Approved, yeah.
Approved, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Green. Yes, thank you, Mr. Green. Is there any discussion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shake.
Perhaps would Mr. Timniak, or Don Savo, or Renee from Public Works be able to give us a rough estimate of what the dollar amount is, of how much this will cost?
Ms. Shake, I don't believe we are appropriating any funds through this, this is just to submit the process, but Mr. Timniak, I will turn it over to you to answer these questions.
So, I don't have the specific cost, because I don't think it has been generated yet or hasn't been made public. This is part of the process, it's standard stock language, I just checked with our grant person on the town side, it's standard stock language the state likes to see in all the grants which pass, so all of their bases are covered, so for tonight's meeting, I don't have a cost. When, as soon as that cost comes available, we'll make sure we share it with all the council members.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. So, does this have to come back again to the council?
Ms. Shake, yes, if, in order for it to be funded, it will have to come through our, through the council for approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just since we're having this discussion now, if it's okay with Mr. Timniak, maybe moving forward when these sort of stock language items come through, if the cost hasn't been determined, we can put a bracket in TBD for cost estimate, just for clarity's sake, I understand how particular the state can be, having gone through the Stratford High process, but I believe we'll probably see these two exact projects probably three or four times before the construction work is actually done. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wellen. The motion has been moved and seconded, seeing no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so we are going to recess from this, oh, sorry, we'll adjourn, that's right.
Motion to adjourn.
Chris.
Mr. Chairman.
Second. Mr. O'Connor, seconds. All right, the, our council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Aye.
Relax, 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 relax. We are, we've just adjourned our town council meeting, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, so everyone can get a water, whatever it may be, and then we will gavel back into our public forum and let everybody finish speaking. We have about 24 names left, just so everyone knows.
[inaudible]
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 We'll go to the bathroom, huh?
We are going to reconvene our public forum at 7:56. As I mentioned, these are names that were already on the list, so we're going to continue down. I'll call the name a few times, because it looks like some people may have left, I know there were some kids, so if your name is on and you miss, we'll see if we can get you. All right, so, first on the list is Kendall Navarro. No Kendall Navarro? All right, we'll skip her for now. Rochelle Duran? Nope. Colleen Hargrove. Just a reminder, say your name and your address, too, okay? Thank you.
Colleen Hargrove, 1317 South Ave, Stratford. I stand before you today with a heavy heart and a deep sense of disappointment. A community that should be known for its resilience and dedication to education is now mirrored by the despicable behavior of the current Board of Ed. now mirrored by the despicable behavior of the current Board of Ed. It pains me to say that their actions have brought shame upon this town and have left me questioning the integrity of the institutions we hold dear. As a resident of Stratford and a parent with a child attending one of our schools, I have always believed in the importance of quality education and the role our Board of Education plays in ensuring every child has access to it. However, recent events have shattered that belief. The behavior displayed by the current Board of Ed members is nothing short of appalling. Instead of focusing on the well-being and academic success of our students, they have chosen to engage in partisan politics and personal agendas disregarding the needs of the community they were elected to serve. Their actions have not only eroded trust in the Board of Education, but have also tarnished the reputation of this town. How can you expect our children to learn the values of respect, integrity, and cooperation when those in positions of authority set such a poor example? I refuse to stand idly by and watch as our educational system suffers at the hands of petty politics and self-interest. It is time for us as a community to demand accountability from our elected officials to insist on a Board of Education that prioritizes the best interests of our children above all else. I urge the town...
One minute.
We cannot allow the future of our children to be jeopardized by the actions of a few individuals who have lost sight of their duty to serve the public good. Let us come together regardless of political affiliation to demand better of our community and for the next generation. Our children deserve nothing less.
Next is Dorothy Lerner.
Thank you. I guess it's because I was here a long time and I'm exhausted. Yes, my name is Dorothy Lerner and my address is 125 Warner Hill Road, Unit 36. As you can see, I am old. I do not have a direct vested interest in the school system here. What I mean by that is I'm not a parent of a child or a grandparent of a child in the system, nor am I a teacher. But what I offer is a little bit of a panoramic overview of my feeling as a proud citizen of Stratford, which I know you all are, every single one of you. My panoramic view is what a wonderful, wonderful town. We have so much to be proud of. I am thrilled to be involved in the Baldwin Center, that's my age group. The services are par excellence. They absolutely are the best senior services I have ever been involved with. The beauty of Stratford, strategically located on the Hoosatonic River, we should be called the jewel of the Hoosatonic River. We're a beautiful town with beautiful beaches, beautiful departments. Let us put the most important natural resource first place, which would be the children of Stratford! The children of Stratford! No service, no service, be it the phenomenal EMS, the fire department, the police department, any department should go above the welfare and the growth and the educational opportunities of our most precious resource. Having said that, I also feel, as a citizen of Stratford, that we should gain a reputation for being one of the best places to bring up children, one of the finest, most shining places in Connecticut, rather than be number 33 on the, whatever that list is, it starts with an A. What is that list? It starts with an A. Thank you, Alliance, yes. Anyway, I want to say thank you for letting me speak. I wish you all a good evening. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, and Ms. Lerner obviously has some acting or theatrical experience there, it seems, but try to just address it to the council and not the crowd because the point of this is to address us. It's not a criticism, it was lovely, but just going forward, if you could just keep the microphone in the stand and address it forward, that's great. Thanks so much. Kara Flockhart.
Hi, my name is Kara Flockhart. I live at 30 Landon Street, and I speak in support of the 6.69% budget proposal. I have three kids who have gone through the Stratford school system. My oldest, who was, she was sitting here just a little while ago, she, about two years ago, she graduated from Stratford High and she would come home quite often. She would speak positively of Mrs. Shang, who I know is here tonight. She should have been on that list of women who are recognized in this town. My oldest would come home and she would talk about the librarian at Stratford High, and she would say the most positive things that happened in the library throughout her day. Now, my oldest is a sophomore at the University of Vermont, and she is studying to be a teacher at the high school level in biology. She directly attributes many of the critical thinking skills to her librarian, Mrs. Shang. Thank you. I now have, I now have my youngest in Stratford High. She's a freshman, and she too now comes home and she talks highly of Mrs. Shang in the library. As a parent, I don't want to see Mrs. Shang disappear at all. I believe Megan Booth, I don't know if Megan Booth is here, but Megan Booth wrote it so well in the Stratford Crier. She wrote in her article titled "Librarians Matter," she said, she wrote, "What could be more safer or more inclusive than a space where every single person can learn whatever they wish? We have much diversity here in Stratford to embrace and to celebrate. We have a high number of second language learners in our system. We need our librarians, we need our math and our reading specialists, we need to give success to our..."
One minute.
"...they need to give success, we need to give success. We need everyone to meet the high range in the diversity of learners that we have. We cannot grow the town of Stratford and not fully fund the educational budget." Thank you.
Thank you. Damian Long? Damian Long? Tess Long? No, okay. Jeff Blanchett? Jen Boulet? Boulet? Kim Rice?
So, 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 Kim Rice, 18111, Boston Ave. Our major concern is the safety and well-being of students and staff, and we want to ensure that the person we put in charge of them always behaves in all situations in the utmost character. That is, quote-quote, by Mike Hendrix. On a Monday, February 26, my First Amendment rights were violated by the Chair of the Board of Ed. Additionally, the Stratford police were weaponized and used against me by Mr. Hendrix, who unlawfully infringed upon my First Amendment rights by forcing me to put down my sign because he could not bear the truth of what it said. His actions were both unethical and unlawful. Madam Mayor, I must inquire, was I say safe? Are our children say safe? Will the next black, black, black person, or anyone who speaks the true, true, true truth and has the police called on them, be say, say, say safe? Furthermore, he acted arbitrarily in changing the speaking time from three minutes to two minutes. How can rules be altered solely for the personal benefit without considering the rules or the welfare of Stafford's taxpaying residents? Is this safe? Is a Stafford safe? Are our children say safe? Madam Mayor, it is concerning that your budget, along with the individuals you endorse for the Board of Ed, are jeopardizing our children's future and don't seem to care. As we can see, they have all left the room. These individuals have yet to demonstrate that our children are their top priority, and unprofessional that Mr. Hendrix publicly shared details from Dr. Osundes' personnel file. Another clear violation of the law. How can we trust our children's safety with Mr. Hendrix as the Chair of Board of Ed? Madam Mayor, Mr. Hendrix altered the rules to grant himself a personal privilege to defend his character. Having previously served on the Town Council, I have never, never, never witnessed such behavior before. Once again, I ask, are we, 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 safe? Are our children say safe? I'm so, so sorry.
Ms. Rice.
Because of my speech, I ask that you give me just one more minute.
Ms. Rice.
I apologize.
Ms. Rice, we have a lot of speakers here to get to, and so we still need to go forward.
I understand. Stand, 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 stand. Just on my voice, voice, voice. Breaking the law, which Mr. Hendrix did many times, that night, 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 is a catalyst for administrative leave. How does he or anyone who engaged in illegal activity still occupy their seats? Where is the investigation for their extremely inappropriate illegal behavior? One can only deduce the reason for this inconsistent treatment is race, racism. A black, black man is treated unjustly while you allow a white man to remain in his seat after breaking the law. History tells us of how racist races use government to run false investigations against black, black, black people. We all know the story of Fred Hammond...
Ms. Rice, you've had another minute.
Martin Luther King and Malcolm X.
Ms. Rice, please, you've had another minute.
Okay, I'm so, so sorry. I didn't, I just wanted to finish. This is a hard, hard, hard.
Ms. Rice.
I really only have two sentences.
Our rules allow you to submit your...
I get, get, get.
Submit it in writing when you go over the time limit, okay?
Okay.
We have, you do have that option, please.
We all know the history of Fred Hammond, Martin Luther King, and Malcolm X.
Ms. Rice, please.
And countless other black, black men and women who lost their lives because of the bogus investigations that were merely lynchings.
Ms. Rice, please.
Are we say safe? And are our children say safe?
Ms. Rice, this is incredibly disrespectful to everyone else here.
Do the Republicans, especially Mr. Hendrix, who sits on Board of Ed, behave in all situations with the utmost character?
Ms. Rice, please.
I'm so, so sorry, but I do have a speech impediment.
And I understand, we give you an extra minute, though. Thank you.
Three minutes doesn't work.
Thank you, thank you.
We need to work on accommodations for folks such as myself.
Ms. Rice, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marcia Harrington. I've lived in 30 Noel Wood Drive. I've lived in Stratford and I've paid taxes in Stratford for 34 years. Four of our four children have gone through the Stratford Public School System. I am currently an employee of the Board of Education. Since my kids started in Stratford Public School 30 years ago, I have witnessed programs getting cut, resources getting whittled down, and continued expectations for teachers to do more with less. With the newly proposed round of cuts, I now feel compelled to speak at a town council meeting for the first time. It is time to stop expecting the schools to scrape by. They should actually be given the resources they need in order to put students in the best position to succeed. I thank you for your time, and I ask you to please do what is best for our students, who are also the future of our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Paula Sweely.
Paula Sweely, Shurt Beach Road.
Give me the house number as well, sorry.
Oh, 197 Shurt Beach Road. I'm going to say very little. It's all been said, and much of it, people are much more eloquent than I am. I would just like Stratford in this decision about the school budget to show that we're a town of character that values our young people above everything else, and that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Swayley. Kathy Collins? Kathy Collins? No? All right. Andrea Corcoran?
Good evening, my name is Andrea Corcoran. I live at 521 Windsor Avenue. I'm here tonight to speak to you about how we have been funding our schools in Stratford in the past years, what funding sources have been used, what strategies have been employed, and what false narratives have been encouraged. Having recently completed my single four-year term on the Stratford Board of Education, two of them as Board Chair, I have been privy to the ins and outs of these budget seasons. I know the work that you, as a council, have ahead of you. I know it won't be easy, and there are difficult decisions to make, but I ask you to please avoid the mistakes of past years. Please do not try to co-opt grant sources, Alliance, as was noted tonight, as town funding. These are different buckets of money, and one is not intended to supplant the other. The Board of Ed has been forced to use grant money before when short-changed by the town and faced with a choice between mass staff reductions and non-ideal budget choices, and we are seeing the consequences of this now with the Esser Cliff. Please fund the Board of Ed without the use of one-time monetary gifts. These two create a fiscal cliff, which we are also seeing this year after receiving $1 million as a town grant last spring. If a one-time monetary gift is considered, please allow the Board of Ed to include it as part of their operating budgets so that the monetary needs of the schools next year can be accurately reflected and not artificially low. Please be mindful of the divisive rhetoric that many, elected officials included, have spread and endorsed. The Board of Ed is not solely responsible for last year's mill rate increase, as some have grown fond of proclaiming. In fact, while the Board of Ed received only a 1.39% increase last year, the town got a 2.98% increase, more than double what the schools saw. Also, any surpluses recognized by the Board of Education, surpluses seen generally as a result of staffing shortages, have gone back to the town. They haven't ever been used to fund the Educational Reserve Fund as requested each year. And importantly, our schools are not failing. Our students, under the guidance of the amazing Stratford Public School staff, are learning every day and recognizing academic gains.
One minute.
Imagine what they could do if they were properly resourced. I was told once, early in my term, that when the Board of Ed fails to give the council a reasonable budget, all bets will be off. We are not losing the council or the mayor's office because the Board Chair at the time thinks she can control the superintendent. I need you all and everybody in this town to know that these have been the political games played on the backs of our students. It's just not right, and it has to stop today. So please, let the monetary maneuvering and the political schemes end with this new town council. Fully and fairly fund Stratford schools at the level requested by Acting Superintendent Borges with a 6.69% increase. Our community is counting on you.
Thank you. Liz Gramling.
Liz Gramling, 295 Fox Hill Road. Good evening. Thank you, councilors, for your service to our town. It is nice to see so many new faces up here. Tonight, I am here to ask the town council to find a way to fully fund the Acting Superintendent's original budget request for a 6.69% increase for next year's school budget. I do not make this request lightly. The loss is outlined by Stratford Public Schools and the Board of Education. If the request is not met, paint a bleak picture for our schools and our town. Tonight, you have heard many folks testify to the power of teachers, especially our library and media specialists and math and reading coaches, and the difference they make in students' lives. What an amazing calling to make the world better every day by helping grow lifelong learners. You have also heard about how high-quality schools improve property values, increase a town's attractiveness to businesses, and help nurture the next generation of leaders. Financially, it's a pretty good... Financially, it's a pretty good return on investment. And you also heard about the transformative power of meeting students where they are and providing them all the supports they require to succeed as learners. Tonight, I want to talk about potential. I want to talk about the future. I want all of us to reflect on our vision for what Stratford could be and how to make that reality. It all starts with our public schools. It all starts with growing problem solvers and learners right here, right now, and giving them the tools to go forth and make more great things happen right here in Stratford. They start their own businesses here, or maybe they take over a family business that's already part of our community fabric. They raise their families here, excited to send their kids to the same schools they attended. They use their skills, expertise, and talent here to keep lifting Stratford up, giving their time and of themselves to continue the good works of organizations like Sterling House, the South End Community Center, and our faith and school communities, just to name a few. Our students already have roots here. Just imagine how they can grow and grow Stratford if we invest in them. I believe we will reap what we sow, and when we succeed, we will succeed together. A 6.69% increase is an investment in our future. I encourage you to be forward-thinking and see what Stratford can be.
Thank you. Sabrina Ramirez.
Sabrina Ramirez, 135 Home Street. Good evening. My name is Sabrina Ramirez, and I reside in 135 Home Street. I am a graduate of Stratford Public Schools, and where my younger brother is currently still in attendance. I am currently completing my student teaching and will complete my coursework this spring. As an aspiring educator, I am extremely concerned about the Board of Education's suggested budget cuts. You may be aware that there is a nationwide teacher shortage, and yet the Board of Education has proposed to eliminate upwards of 35 teaching positions. Thirty-five. If these positions are eliminated due to a lack of funding by the town, I am certain that prospective educators will steer clear of the school district, which includes myself. Current teachers who are dedicated to their jobs and have built amazing connections with students will be displaced as a result of bumping that will take place, which also includes my cooperating teacher. Prospective homebuyers who are looking to raise a family in a nice town with good schools will skip over the town of Stratford. If these cuts are so, if these cuts end up happening, yes, money is not endless, however, there must be other options to explore. Eliminating certified librarians and replacing them with tutors is not a viable solution. Librarians not only spark a love of reading, but they are the sole technology teacher at an elementary level, and not to mention the front lines of IT. Reading consultants are the key resource who provide our students with intervention and tiered instruction to help close the gaps and combat the learning loss of COVID that is still so very evident. Math coaches help the learning loss, no, sorry. Math coaches help and support our students who are still struggling in various areas of computation while providing classroom teachers and support and innovative ways to close the aforementioned achievement gap. I implore you to fund the budget recommended by Acting Superintendent Borges. I encourage you to find solutions to the money issues that seem to plague this town, which directly affects the student's ability to thrive and to be successful academically, socially, and emotionally. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Ferrera. Maria Ferrera.
Good evening. Maria Ferrera, 4205 Main Street. I am the daughter of immigrants. My parents immigrated from Italy in the late 50s, and when I was born, everyone spoke Italian in the house. So I was behind in my reading, and the teachers at school sent me to the library. The librarians helped me with ESL materials and helped me improve my reading. I stand before you, a product of libraries and librarians. I am the president of the Stratford Library Association and a lifetime reader. I have lived in Stratford for 30 years, and I have supported the Board of Education. I don't have children, I've never had kids in school. I gladly pay my taxes to support education in our town. Librarians are important. They help you navigate the world of information, and I know that the internet is big, and everyone looks into the internet to find information. But without librarians, you wouldn't really know how to navigate all that information. Please fully fund the BOE and the Stratford Library. And also, on the 27th of April, we're having our library fundraiser. It's called Hooray for Hollywood. I hope you all get your invitations in the mail and that you can please come and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia.
My name is, excuse me, Sonia. I've not been talking long enough. Excuse me. My name is Sonia Devitt, and I live at 545 Hilltop Drive. I'm here also to speak with regard to what I have been reading about in the various media, the elimination of librarians, the elimination of special subject coaches, enrichment opportunities, et cetera. Also, the elimination of the Alpha Program. You're doing all of, or this is, all of this is being proposed, and yet, we're in an alliance district. We're one of the lowest 10% functioning school systems in the state. Does, how does this make sense? How does it make sense to be eliminating special support services and this enrichment that makes for successful students when we are at the bottom 10% of the state? School libraries and programs that provide individual and small group attention are essential to improving the skills of all students, never mind struggling students. Rather than eliminating Alpha, we should be improving it. The internet reports that the top five performing school districts in Connecticut are Westport, New Canaan, Wilton, Darien, and Greenwich. Have we studied what they are doing to be so good? I would think that would be a top interest of the Board of Ed, for one thing. I would hope they're studying to see what we could be copying. Maybe we could learn something. I know it would cost money. I don't want to hear that they're a wealthy and advantaged community, not as long as we're going to cut our own education budget. Also, I've read that in 2020, we created an ERF Reserve Fund that has never been funded. Every year, a council wants the Board of Ed to save money. Almost every year, the Board of Ed delivers a surplus. Yet instead of putting the Board of Ed surplus into the ERF, it puts the Board of Ed surplus into the Town General Fund to keep the mill rate down. What's wrong with this picture? Why should the Board of Ed continue to deliver surpluses if they don't reap the benefits? I'm sorry, your honors, but it doesn't sound right to me, and it's not smart. We can do this. We can, regardless of mill rate. People don't like to live in expensive towns or high-tax towns, but they don't like to live in towns that don't have good schools either. We can do this, so let's do it.
Thank you. Sarah Carilla.
Sarah Carilla, 353 First Avenue, in the Lorchick section of Stratford. Good evening, I was the loud one. I apologize. My emotions got the best of me. Faces. My three. These are the faces of those affected. They lose their tutors? Are y'all gonna be the ones they come home to and cry to why they're not good enough to be in class with the rest of the other kids? Make them feel lower than they already have? These three, since kindergarten. My son's in second grade, my girls are in first. They work with math, reading. The library teacher was essential, until she stopped coming. Sad. And who was the one who had to put it back together at home and tell them, "You just go in, you be yourself, you do the best you can, and you learn, 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 and there's no dumb questions." You're with your tutors because they want to help you do better and be you, and guess what, you're doing it. This one, right here, my girl Jade, she came home the other day, she said, "My math teacher told me I'm doing good, but mom, I'm doing great." Because guess what? I can count to 120 now. These kids, the things that they do in school, I don't get privy to. If I could be a fly on the wall, I can only thank these tutors, these learning specialists, the librarian, so much. But they really don't have any idea how much I really appreciate what they've done for my three. And they have the rest of their educational careers ahead of them. And they've cried, they've looked down on themselves, and they've turned it around because of the people that work with them every day that tell them, "You can, and this is how, and I'll show you, and I'll help you, and I'll give you that extra attention that that 20-something class can't give you." Their teachers are the best teachers, they really are. But when they get that extra help with those tutors and those learning specialists, and they go for that, to that library and media specialist, guess what? That's the fill-in, that's the gap, that's the love that's missing. That's that extra one-on-one attention that's brought them from down here to up here within themselves. And I don't want to see that taken away by four people, one of which has children in the same school as my kids. Disgusting. And she couldn't even stay? She could not even stay to hear me say this tonight. So what does that say about the people that voted to take the learning away from my children? Look at this shirt. Not all who wander are lost. I don't want my babies to be lost, and now they finally feel like they aren't? Please, please don't make all their hard work go in reverse, because they're looking forward to moving on to the next grade. Because I know they can do it, and now they know they can do it too, because of who they've worked with.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Lisa Carol Fabian. Lisa.
Lisa Carol Fabian, 144 Wainwright Place. Standing here today, I'm not only an elected member of the Board of Education, but also the collective voice of my fellow educators, parents, and advocates of our schools, and most importantly, our students. I urge you to stand with me and support the Acting Superintendent's proposed 6.69% budget increase, a vital investment in the future of our educational system. Recently, the Board of Education faced a pivotal decision, one that felt like a step backward rather than forward. Despite recommendations from professionals, the majority opted for a mere 3.27% increase, endangering critical aspects of our schools. This decision puts essential roles, including school librarians, reading and math coaches, and the Alpha Program at risk. Alpha isn't just a program, it's a lifeline for our most vulnerable students, offering support that can change their lives and redirect their paths towards success. Many of these students bravely show up every day because of the nurturing environment Alpha provides. It's a supportive family that fosters growth and resilience. I've witnessed firsthand the impact of this program, and I invite you all to go see it for yourself and speak to our children. Adding to the gravity of the situation, former Council Chair Chris Pia, Tassioo, Pam Mangini, and Acting Superintendent Borges to explore alternative budget increase options to their original 6.69% increase. This request included 5.5, 4.5, and 3.5. Ms. Mangini and Borges couldn't even consider presenting a 3.5 despite their professional expertise, as it would significantly harm our schools. However, the Board of Education majority chose to propose a meager 3.27% increase, a drastic drop from the Acting Superintendent's initial 6.69% request. Such a deviation from professional advice is unprecedented and alarming. It's disheartening to see individuals make decisions that disregard the expertise of trained professionals. Never before has a Board of Education adjusted a budget request at a percentage point lower than what professionals proposed, yet some members of our current Board of Education chose to go below the recommended increase and cut it by over half. I leave you with this. Just two years ago, I had the privilege of addressing the graduating class at Benell High School, where I emphasized the importance of making brave choices that define your paths. Today, you are faced with one of those pivotal decisions. As Nelson Mandela wisely said, "May your choices reflect your hopes, not your fears." Let us not be driven by fear, but by hope for a brighter tomorrow. Investing in our schools means giving our students the resources they need to thrive and empowering them to make brave choices. It means choosing courage over complacency and hope over fear. Esteemed council members, I urge you to consider the profound impact of your decisions on the lives of the countless students who depend on us. Let us come together and make the bold choice, the brave choice, the right choice to invest in our schools and the future of our community. Thank you.
Michael Langston. Michael Langston.
Good evening. My name is Michael Langston. I am 205 Wickland Avenue. I come here wearing two hats. One as a resident and a father of graduates of Stratford School System. My daughter went on to get her doctorate in pharmacy at a Northeastern. My son struggled a little bit, but he was able to get through with the help of a lot of the special services that you're looking to cut. So, raised in Bridgeport, they went out of their way to make sure that libraries were open. I lived closer to Stratford than I did where most of the libraries were. I had access to what was called the Bookmobile, when they knew the understanding of getting books to the masses and a lot of the more unserviced kids of the community. And you're looking to reverse that. It doesn't make any sense. Secondly, I am the president of Local 376 UAW, who represents paraprofessionals and cafeteria workers. Myself and Sarah spend a lot of time in your schools, talking to your principals, arguing with your admin people. It's a shell game they're playing now. That $2 million surplus, you're understaffed. That's why you have a surplus. You can't, now you want to cut even more. So teachers have to be frustrated with bigger classes. Paraprofessionals don't even know what they're doing anymore, what their job descriptions are, because they play a shell game. There's no such thing as a one-on-one anymore. Now that's a one teacher, three students. The teachers, the parents need to know this. And I'm gonna make it my life work, letting them know this. They're getting, they're underserved. What you have left here after the pandemic are people that want to be here. You can't hire paraprofessionals, you cannot hire teachers that want to come. You're not even compatible, compatible or compatible with other towns around you. So it's gonna be a race to the bottom. They're overworked, you're looking to understaff, you're looking to cut money for substitutes. They can't even have a mental health day. There's not gonna be anybody here. You are on the brink of the frying pan, getting ready to fall into the fire. Now, my kids are gone, got their educations. I seen this started happening when you eliminated Stratford Academy. And then, then having kids go to their home schools, that didn't even work in the 70s, because all the money flowed north. seventies, because all the money flowed north, though, past the Mill River Country Club.
Thank you, Mr. Langston.
And now, you're looking, doing the same thing over again.
Thank you, Mr. Langston.
Thank you.
That, uh, that is the conclusion of the list, just gonna run down those names that we missed just quickly, just in case. Kendall Navarro, Rochelle Duran, Damian Long, Tess Long, Jeff Blanchett, Jen Boulay, Kathy Collins. All right, seeing none, then, we are going to adjourn our public forum at eight thirty-eight. Thank you so much for coming tonight.